Okay, I guess we're not going to watch you.
Oh, yeah.
All right, everybody? Get started. Good evening and welcome to the October 6 meeting of the West Sacramento Planning Commission. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Moore, would you please lead us tonight?
Our Pledge of Allegiance to defy on the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, I see. We'll wait for everybody to get to their seats. Okay. Tonight's agenda is available on the counter along with the white Request to Speak cards. The Request to Speak card should be completed and turned in to the clerk on my right. And it will be presented on the completion of any staff presentation. Also, for those speakers wishing to speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the commission, please write Item A on your card. Or if you wish to speak on a specific item on the agenda, please write the agenda item number on your card. All speakers will be limited to three minutes and we ask the speaker to monitor their time on my right. There's a clock there. Speaking in public may cause some individuals to feel uncomfortable, so everyone is asked to be professional and respectful to all speakers. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised, so all speakers in order to be recognized must be called on by the chair and come forward to the microphone and state your name for the record. This time we'll take presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the commission. I don't see any, so we'll move on to the correspondence and staff communication from the Planning Commission secretary, Mr. Tilly.
Yes, thank you. Two items to note quickly. If you didn't have a chance to meet her on my right tonight is Leslie Walker with Chronic City Attorney's Office. She's pinch hitting for Mona tonight, who's off at a conference. And then, secondly, I just wanted to remind the commissioners that we're now, the city is now accepting applications for being on commissions for the next term, and those are due December 2nd, so I would hope that everyone will be turning, picking those up and turning those in soon. Don't wait till the last minute. And that concludes correspondence at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly. Welcome, Ms. Walker. Is there any ex parte communications from the planning commissioners at this time? None, okay. We'll move on to the consent item. We have two items on the consent agenda, and one is consideration approval of the minutes, and the other is consideration of finding of general plan consistency for grading activities for the Southport Levy Improvement Project. What is the pleasure of the commission? Would you like to take both of them?
We need to take them separately, please, Chair.
Separately, okay. We'll take up the minutes first. All accept a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Sternfeld has moved. Commissioner Trumber, second. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
A sudden abstain.
Any noes? No, it's okay. Motion is approved. Next, we'll take up consideration of finding and of general plan consistency for grading activities for the Southport Levy Improvement Project. All accept a motion?
Motion to approve.
Could I ask a question before we continue through? David, on the little map they gave us, there's those little black lines in there in certain areas, and it says that they're potential borrow parcels. What's that mean?
Those are potential locations where they could harvest material to actually construct the levees.
Stockpile material or pull it out?
Toby or Ken, we have representatives from with SAFCA here that can explain those in better detail.
Toby, you can turn on the mic, please. Good evening. Toby Wong, Supervising Civil Engineer with West SAFCA. No, it's not stockpile material. It's actually material that will be harvested within the site. Most of it will be replaced with material from the offset area or from the site itself, but it's not a stockpile material.
But do we own that property?
We own the property that's, we call Borrow One Site, south of the city limits there, which is right on the Southcross Levy. If you look at the exhibit, the West SAFCA purchased that property.
Oh, so you have purchased all these properties?
Well, just that one.
Because the one all the way to the south end of the property?
Oh, River Park? No, we don't own that one, and we had discussions with the property owner for an option agreement, but we don't have one in place. It's material that we've tested that we've determined it's appropriate for the levy improvements, and if the contractor chooses to use that, he would have to negotiate with the property owner to have rights to harvest that material.
Okay. That's good enough. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay. All right.
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Moore, seconds. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any noes? All right. Motion unanimously approved. Next, we'll move to our regular agenda item of the Public Workshop on Proposed Amendments to the zoning ordinance to implement the General Plan 2035 land uses. Mr. Laffey.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. The city is currently undertaking a comprehensive general plan update, and a draft of this was presented to the commission last month on September 15th. The anticipated city council public hearing date for this item of the general plan is December 14th later this year. In anticipation of General Plan 2035 approval, staff is looking into implementation measures, one of which is updating the zoning ordinance. A full modernization is anticipated to commence shortly after General Plan 2035 is approved. However, this process could take one to two years. The changes proposed tonight, and which we are seeking feedback on, would hold over the current zoning ordinance until a full modernization could take effect and be approved. It would also incorporate the three new land uses that are proposed in the general plan. So there are three new land uses proposed in the general plan. One of them is the commercial zone, which consolidates three existing commercial zones, neighborhood commercial, a general commercial, and the heavy commercial. So that's a consolidation. The second new zone, or new general plan land use, is the corridor mixed use, and that would be along West Capitol Avenue, west of where the Central Business District is, all the way over to a little past Harbor Road. And that's fairly similar to Central Business District, but a little bit less intensive. And the third general plan use, general plan land use that is proposed, which we would need to incorporate into the zoning ordinance if it were adopted, is the neighborhood mixed use, the mixed use neighborhood commercial. And that is similar to the corridor mixed use, but it's a little bit less intensive. It has a lower minimum density for residential, and the floor air ratio is lower. So it's meant to be more of a neighborhood commercial rather than the corridor mixed use, which is a little bit more intensity. So here's a map of where those three new land uses are. As you can see, mixed use corridor, which is the dark blue, is along West Capitol Avenue. It primarily replaces the general commercial, which is the middle commercial zone, and a little bit of the Central Business District, general plan land use. The other, the mixed use neighborhood commercial, it's a little bit scattered out throughout the city, but primarily it's along Sacramento Avenue and along Jefferson. It also replaces primarily the general commercial zone. And the section, the property north of town center, which is currently zoned mixed use, it would now be mixed use neighborhood commercial. And then there is the commercial zone, which is consolidating the three existing commercial zones, primarily along Jefferson and right there for the freeway, and then also along Jefferson and Southport. So with the general plan, we're looking for adoption in December, we'll have to figure out a way to incorporate what's in the general plan into the current zoning ordinance until that we can go through a full zoning ordinance modernization. The three general plan land uses will have to incorporate into the zoning ordinance matrix. So we tried to create a framework for how do we figure out what's permitted and conditional, not permitted or conditional. Instead of having to go line by line, we try and create a framework to make it a little bit easier. So this is the framework for the commercial land use. So as you can see the table, if it's, try to make it somewhat simple. It is a little complicated, but try to simplify it. So if it's permitted in C1 and C2, really if it's permitted in C1, it would be permitted in the new commercial zone. And then if it's conditional in C1 right now, but permitted in C2 or C3, it would be conditional in the new commercial zone. If it's nothing at all, it's not marked in C1, but it's permitted in C2, then it would be permitted in the new commercial zone. And then if it's conditional in C2, then it would be conditional in the new commercial zone. So that's kind of the basic framework. Not all the land uses in the land use matrix quite align with that. There are ones that maybe we want to permit, or we want to have conditional instead of what the framework would say, and those are called out as exceptions. And that list is flexible. Maybe we could add, you know, if the commission wanted to add land uses to that, or maybe make some conditional that would be permitted, or vice versa. But so far, what we have is up there. Assembly Hall permitted in the new commercial zone. Technical School permitted. Use goods sales permitted. So really, some of them are things that we're trying to go for, like the health club would be permitted in the new commercial zone. Right now, it's conditional. Part of the general plan is the healthy communities, we want to promote healthy communities. So as an example, make a health club, which is basically a gym, make it permitted. And then fueling station, a gas station, conditional. Trying to, general plan, trying to transition away from auto-oriented uses, so we're trying to reflect that. So that's the framework for the new commercial zone. Go on to the next new general plan land use, mixed use corridor. That is the area along West Capitol Avenue. So for this one, we started, our starting point was the Central Business District. We kind of used that as our framework and went from there. So Central Business District used all the same land uses that are permitted and conditional in that one, and then moved them over to the new MUC zone, but there are exceptions to that, and those are noted. Fueling station would be not permitted. Health club permitted. Really, the auto-oriented uses would not be permitted because we're trying to, general plan, proposed general plan is going away from auto-oriented uses. And then also, it would have single-family and two-family dwelling conditional. So go to the next one, the mixed use neighborhood commercial. So as a starting point for this one, we use the existing mixed use zone and went from there. So what do we, what's in the existing mixed use zone, and what do we want to have different from that for this one? Those are the exceptions, the differences, and those are noted above. So really, a lot of the exceptions are fairly similar to the ones in the other zones. So additional changes to the zoning ordinance, besides the land use matrix, we're going to have to do some additional changes. The consistency matrix, which is basically the general plan land uses, and then you have the zoning ordinance, the zones, how do they correlate? Most of them have the same name, some of them don't, so we'll have to update that table. Another section in Tile 17, Division 3, the establishment of zones, we'll have to add the new zones. Law creation and law development standards, we'll have to update that, those sections as well. And all these, all these sections we're updating, it's for the interim, for the next year or two, until we can do a full zoning modernization. And so really, we're trying to keep it somewhat easy, because it's only going to be for a year or two. We don't want to dive too much into it, trying to, it's only for a year or two, hopefully, in the interim. So for the law creation, law development standards, the same thing, we're proposing to use the same framework that we have already for Central Business District and the mixed use zone. So I'll end with a map of where the three new land uses are. So this concludes my presentation. Open to feedback, questions, comments?
I'll open up a questions to my left. Commissioner Lepore?
Yes, a couple of questions. Was there any thought to incorporating live work? Is that in any of these? I didn't see that live work actually listed out, but I'm not sure if that was meant to be part of any of those, neighborhood or maybe corridor?
We could add it in, yeah.
Certainly, it would never be our intention to not have that. We usually would just call that a mixed use, you know, project. That's one of the things, particularly on the mixed use corridor, that we want to try to get to as much as we can, and to follow some of the prior recommendations out of the West Capitol Avenue planning work that's been done over the years, try to be much more flexible to be able to accommodate uses like that.
Great, okay. I guess this leads to the other question, is, you know, since retail is going away quickly, and we're seeing a lot of developments that are, cities are kind of forcing people to do mixed use, but then if there's no retail to fill it, they're filling with multiple restaurants, and I have a little bit of experience in that, and it's, you know, they end up cannibalizing each other if it's only restaurants, and then the alternative is empty retail. So having the flexibility to add live work or other services.
Yeah, our mixed use zone wouldn't force somebody to have a vertical integration, where you have commercial on the bottom and residential on top. It provides a flexibility, you could do either one or the other. We do have some areas in the specific plans, like the Bridge District, where we do require retail on the bottom, but not for the mixed use, the mixed use corridor, the mixed use neighborhood commercial, that wouldn't be required.
And retail is defined as?
Well, we, yeah, we have these different retail, in the land use matrix, we have a whole list of different retail uses, which would be cut out individually, whether they're permitted or conditional in that zone. If you wanted to do a project in the mixed use zone, you wouldn't be required to have commercial on the bottom and residential on top.
Great, okay.
Yeah, a big part of the early genesis of why we wanted to make some of these land use changes in the general plan, which, you know, been going back several years, is really just along what you're getting at, is that, you know, we have, you know, old-fashioned, you know, community commercial zone, retail land along West Capitol, Sacramento Avenue, other places, and we could never hope to absorb all of that with just pure retail. So it's why we're trying to move in a much more mixed use and flexible direction to help some of those areas, you know, infill, noting that, you know, it may not all be commercial, but that's, you know, frankly, okay, because that's just the way things are trending.
Thank you. Dr. Kelcher?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hi, just a couple of quickies, mostly about density. I noticed that Riverfront mixed use has the highest maximum, 120, and then there are several of these proposed designations that are maxed out at 60. I'm not quite seeing the value of the maximums. It would seem to me, at a time when the region is trying to stimulate urban development, that even though these numbers are fairly high, why have maximums at all?
Well, part of it's for, in the general plan, for the environmental work, for the EIR to have the maximum. The other reason is, some of these areas are more, very, like in Southport, or in areas where you, you know, 60 units to the acre, that's getting pretty far up there. You're looking at maybe a five-story, six-story building. So any higher than that, you wouldn't want a skyscraper looking down. Not that that would economically make sense, but that's the reason for having a maximum. In our experience, we've never really had a problem with, that's a problem we would want to have, is somebody bumping up against the maximum, we haven't had.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. You could also take care of that with a height ordinance.
Yeah, we do have height restrictions as well. So if somebody who wanted to do like just a studio or one bedrooms, they could have a higher density, but they were height.
Yeah, I think what's most critical on these new land use designations is frankly that for the first time, we're really going to start to have some minimums, minimum FARs. Those are things we have never had before.
I love the minimums.
And I think the densities here on a net basis would be much higher, because both of these districts are about a 50-50 or 60-40 assumed split between residential and non-residential uses. So on a district-wide basis, you know, the net density for residential, in reality, could end up being much higher, you know, than what we may show here on a net basis. But Seamus is right, for secret purposes, we had to sort of draw the line in the sand sort of somewhere for, you know, analyze a certain amount of build-out. And so that's what the EIR is based on. But these are all significantly higher than what we have in the general plan currently.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Trumber? No comments? Commissioner Moore?
Well, I actually do have a question for you. And I was looking at the mixed use along West Capitol Avenue, and I wasn't concerned about what's approved or what's conditional, it's the one that's not permitted. Have you contacted every one of those businesses on West Capitol that you're going to take them and make them not permitted anymore, let them know what you're doing?
We have not contacted every business along West Capitol. The general plan, there are.
We really need to do that. You have so many businesses that you're saying are not permitted, and this is, you're McDonald's? You just approved and allowed the new burrito store to go in with their drive-through, and they're not permitted anymore? Wiener Schnitzel, Two McDonald's, The Burger Place? I mean, you need to let them know you got the gas stations that aren't going to be permitted anymore? I guess they're permitted by whatever you call it.
They would end up being, potentially, they would end up being non-conforming.
Non-conforming.
Except for those that were.
But I mean, I think the point I'm making is, when you're taking away stuff that people have spent vast amounts of money in, you should at least give them the common courtesy of letting them know that you're thinking of doing something different. That kind of bothers me that we're going to take some of them away. And some of them, we need to have move on. I don't disagree, but I think you at least need to give them the opportunity to know. Because you got the repairs facilities down there, you have the junkyard down there that does repairs, you know, you got the little car wash in the middle that's, these are all not permitted. That's a lot of businesses that you're affecting on West Capitol Avenue. You should at least give them the opportunity to know what's going on. And that was my comment on West Capitol Avenue. And then I was looking in, it's kind of the same idea over on Sacramento Avenue. Sacramento Avenue, no offense to the old man of the group, I have trouble reading your map there to tell exactly where some of the designations are. Sacramento Avenue, per se, is kind of difficult for me to tell. It looks like everything down, kind of like where the Broderick Restaurant is, all the way to the I Street Bridge, is just going to be residential. That's kind of what I look at, but I can't tell for sure if that's it. And if it is, I'm not sure that I totally agree with that, because we got some businesses and stores in there that are not residential.
Yeah, so that would be mixed use neighborhood commercial, which will allow for retail, commercial, or residential. Provides more flexibility than they have right now.
And crop production is a permitted use is not probably the top of my list. Just because having people growing crops on a thoroughfare doesn't seem like the brightest idea in the world. We have one down there already, and they're fine, but I mean, I don't know that we want to have a bunch of them down Sacramento Avenue. Conditional rather than permitted might be a wise thought.
Crop production is long in thought of as a holding use, and that is by the means we have allowed the various, you know, urban farms, such as the one at Fifth and C. And uses that we see as an interim use of the property until such time as, you know, it's, you know, long-term use becomes, you know, viable. So that's in the zoning ordinance, you know, currently, and it was good foresight at the time, because then with.
I think it's a great interim use. I just don't think it wants to be a permitted use for the rest of our life. Hopefully, we get better uses down there. And again, I was back to the same thing on Sacramento Avenue. You have the tow guy, you have a couple repair shops in there, you have a number of people that you're affecting by not letting them be permitted. Again, I think you need to do the common courtesy thing and let people know that you're trying to do some effect to their property. I think that's, and then my last comment is, and I can't figure it out, but, okay, David, you ready? In Southport, we approved the project for the nursing home.
Yes.
On that far tip towards, just before the Barge Canal. Even though they put their sign on the other property.
Yes.
We approved the furthest one. But I'm trying to read how mixed use affects the nursing home. Is that permitted to have a nursing home?
They're, they're, they're mixed, they're under our current mixed use zone already, and the planning commission did grant them a use permit for that facility.
Well, I know that, but I was just going, you put that new use in there, and I was going, because that's new on the map.
Yeah, so they're, they're good to go either way.
Okay.
And it's up to them to, you know, build the thing.
No, I understood that, but it looked like we made a new zone change, because that's part of the new colored part.
Yeah, so.
I know we approved it, I just didn't know if that was right.
Yeah, that particular site, the zoning will end up being very similar to what's on the ground, you know, currently.
Okay. That's my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Sternfeld?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I was wondering kind of more in the vein of my Commissioner Moore's. in the, in the vein of my Commissioner Moore's comments, if you could just speak to some of the other decisions, or preliminary decisions you made on the map, and how they were zoned, particularly there's some what appear to be very ag-related parcels or undeveloped parcels in the south part of town at this point, that have commercial designations and neighborhood, mixed-use neighborhood commercial. If you could just speak to how those decisions came about, or?
Yes, those are, the ones in Southport, to the very south, those are part of specific plans that were already approved. Like River Park and Yarborough, down the very southern edge, is that what you're referring to?
Well, there's these, the two very small commercial parcels closest to the river.
Yeah, so, yeah, one of those is in Liberty, and the other is in River Park. So those are already zoned commercial, or, in general, the existing general plan has a.
Yeah, those, those came about with the Southport framework plan. So in really the, in Southport, the primary areas of change would be Stone Lock, and a few, few other locations. But by and large, through this whole general plan effort, we haven't been proposing very many land use changes in Southport. The framework plan seemed to still be desirable and moving forward. But all, you know, Stone Lock is one example where we want to put one mixed-use designation over the whole thing, rather than, you know, the four or five different designations that it has, you know, currently. And it would still be subject to a master plan. But by and large, all, every, everything that you see on there, sort of in the, say, south of the town center and the high school, is essentially the same, would be the same as it is now.
And then how about the parcel on the very northern part of town, that's kind of on the other side of the highway there by itself?
Oh, yes, is that the, the ag parcel? Kind of by, just on the south end of what we call the notch. Seamus, do we have this map that we can, we have on the big screen?
It's in the very top-left corner of the map.
The CHP Academy?
It looks like it's on the other side of the road from there.
Yeah, so that, that property is where the hotels were approved, and so the half of that property is currently business park, and the other half is currently neighborhood or general commercial. So it's our, it's currently commercial, and this is one of those, we're consolidating all the commercial zones. So any, any area that's currently one of the three commercial zones is shown as red on the map.
Okay, and then, following up on one other comment, Commissioner Moore, can you speak to moving forward between now and the time this item comes back, what the process is for engaging the public or letting current property owners know about these changes?
Well, yeah, the first step is, you know, finish general plan, which we're, we're very close on, and we're, we're bringing this tonight, sort of as a, as a preview of various implementation measures of the general plan that the commission, you know, will need to take up. We, we probably won't bring this back before the planning commission until at least after you make your, take your formal action on the general plan, which will hopefully be at one of your next two meetings. And then, once we have council action, then we can start rolling these things out in formal. So we might be, we might be a little early on this one tonight, but we wanted to take advantage of a, of an open meeting. We will provide notice for, because it'll have to come back in a formal hearing, and there may, when there may be another suite, some other suite of ordinance changes that we'll try to bundle together. Our main goal of getting this out in front of you tonight is to get some feedback on, just on the, what Mr. Laffey and I sort of refer to as the algorithm of how we got there, so that we can bring these back in a more formal setting in your next few meetings, so that, you know, we don't trail behind the general plan too long. So we'll be able to provide formal notice for a formal hearing when it comes back next time.
So the one thing I would echo from Commissioner Moore is, I agree with him that there are several existing businesses that would essentially become non-conforming uses based on this plan. And while I agree in concept with what we're doing, I also think we're putting some of those businesses at a disadvantage as a non-conforming use, not being able to expand or maybe upgrade their facilities in the future, based on the rules around non-conforming uses for these existing properties. So I, I just think we, in an abundance of fairness to those existing businesses, early notification and clarity about what we're doing, and what that may mean for them is important.
Yeah, and certainly, you know, this was our first stab at this. Some of those can slide into the, you know, permitted column or conditional column. You know, we weren't trying to get into each, go line by line, you know, tonight. But generally speaking, we can take a look at more of the businesses that are on the ground, and see how many, you know, would be put into a non-conforming status, and report more on that over your turn on this item.
That'd be appreciated. And I appreciate the item coming forward now. I have no, I don't think it was, you know, I think it was, the concept's fully baked, and that's just kind of the feedback that I'm, I wanted to provide tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Oster?
Yeah, thank you for your, for your hard work on this. So the way I see it, I think that, I see the direction being that we're making this a lot clearer for use. I think it'll be a lot more, it'll be a lot easier to administer for city staff, and I think it'll also be easier to use as a business, a possible developer, business owner, and that I really appreciate. The one thing is that we have to balance that with the loss of discretion by the city, particularly by the planning commission. So what are that, what's that kind of cost benefit? So that's what I'm looking at, is even if I, I, you know, you know, feel, feel good about approving this, where we're going, we, there's, there's a little bit of loss of, of the discretion that the planning commission would have, so I just want to be cognizant. So I'll start with echoing what my two colleagues before me were talking about. I think it's fine to have existing non-conforming. I think that's a, that's, you know, I'm pretty, I'm pretty comfortable with that. I worry, though, that they're not undesirable uses. This is not like Pioneer Bluffs, where we have, you know, heavy industrial that will make you do a complete 180 to kind of a office residential entertainment area. This is a slight tweak to what is existing, and so I would be certainly more comfortable if, I totally agree that we should be notifying property owners, but barring that, it's, it's relatively simple. If there are one or two designations that we want to modify, we can do that, and maybe everyone can get comfortable with that. And turning certain things into conditional uses, rather than a disallowable use. And I do think that fast food restaurants is one of them. While we, you know, I can, I totally unboard with the, the health goals behind that, we all, I also have to recognize that it's, it's a really critical form of, of getting meals for people who may not have cooking facilities, or busy families and individuals. So, you know, it's not just, you know, I definitely support healthy communities, and while I want everyone to be going to their, you know, local or urban farm and getting their, their meals, I think we have to recognize the importance of, of existing fast food facilities. I do like things that are, like that things are much more general. I echo Commissioner Kelcher's concerns about maximum. I understand why, and I actually personally am, am really supportive of, of keeping the densities in Southport, particularly the neighborhood use low. The reason behind that is, I think that we need to maintain some of the truly suburban character of that area. And I, and I like the idea of having, you know, kind of our taller, much more denser areas congregated in a certain area, in this particular case, kind of our new development riverfront areas. A slightly smaller question I had was on the neighborhood commercial. There's one note here about community education K through 12 was a conditional use. We, we have a lot of households, and we have a lot of families, and I want to see where we are on early childhood education, like preschools, daycares. Could you, could you speak to what type of uses are allowable under that? It wasn't clear to me.
Yeah, so preschool or early education, looks like we don't have a set land use for that, so it would likely fall under the.
Preschool or that type of thing would be under the daycare center.
Okay.
Community education K-12 is, you know, is literally starting at K and up.
Okay, and so is that, is that currently an allowed designation or conditional? I'm sorry if I'm not looking in the right areas. Oh, there we go.
You know, that, that has been, K-12 has been conditional, at least in Central Business District for a while. We have been here at the planning commission, I can recall, at least of, doing quite a few use permits for some of the charter schools that have come in, in town in various places, and including the closest one, which was at the Dharma Realm, sort of kitty-corner from us. So many of those have become before the planning commission the last, you know, four or five years.
So I'm looking, and I see daycares as permitted and commercial and conditional under the, the mixed, the two mixed-use designations. So thanks for pointing me that, I just missed that one.
That's one we'll want to look at a little more, I think.
And, and then what, what I'll kind of end my remarks with, is I do really appreciate the changes to the, the commercial. I actually think that it's, what you've done actually addresses what Commissioner Wapour was, was raising, is that the way that we kind of had it with C1 and C2, it really tried to, that type of kind of microzoning resulted in where you would have, you know, all these industrial uses in this one area. And as an example, you know, we had kind of a YOTech, which we recently approved, which I know, we recently approved the brewery there, you know, I know that there's a bunch of, you know, health, health center, or, health, whatever, health clubs there. There's like a CrossFit, and a Zumba, and stuff. And so I, what I like is that this allows a lot more flexibility, that if you want to use an industrial space for something that's much more of a retail use, that's, that's permitted, essentially, barring, you know, certain approvals. But I do like the direction a lot of the commercial. Though, so my only concern is the neighborhood, the mixed-use neighborhood commercial, I think is, you just want to be a little more sensitive to it, because I think that you, you do have residents who live in those areas, so, who may have concerns about uses and what the buildings look like, right? Like what their setback is, what their height is. So other than that, good job. Thank you.
Very good. I appreciate all the feedback from my fellow commissioners. They've, they covered quite a bit of territory here on, you know, what we are thinking about, and very grateful that we do have a public workshop to digest this information, and process it, and, you know, see where we're going to be at on, when we come back on December 14th. I think that that's going to be the date when this is going to come back to us.
Well, that's, that's the date where we're, we've slotted for the council to hopefully act on the general plan itself.
Okay.
I wouldn't, I would, we could bring, conceivably bring this back in December to you, but I obviously wouldn't want to do that till you at least had made your action on the general plan itself, since this is an implementation step. And so I definitely, once we conclude this item, I definitely want to poll the planning commissioners' availability for your next two, next couple of meetings.
Okay, that'll, that'll be good. I think that there is still some work that needs to be done, based on the feedback from the commissioners, notifying the business owners along West Capitol Avenue on the changes, and, you know, just so that we have a comfort zone on, you know, the impact this would have. And, you know, they're, they're, like my commissioner, fellow commissioners have been saying, there is some consistency now. There, and I appreciate the updates on conforming to what we had made some changes in the past and now. It's reflecting here. And, you know, this is, this is definitely very helpful for us to, you know, process and move forward on what we think we can do to, to, you know, look into this a little further as we look at it holistically, on all the other general plan changes that are happening. And I don't have any requests to speak from the public, so I will, you know, open and close it at this point. And just want to make sure there are, if there are any other questions from the commissioners, or comments, or feedback, because we had quite a bit of discussion from other commissioners. Yes, Commissioner Moore?
If I might, it was actually West Capitol and Sacramento Avenue.
And Sacramento, okay, thank you.
Yeah, not just the one, just to clarify that.
Thank you.
I was concerned about the businesses on both.
On both, yeah, that would be very helpful. And just doing the outreach and education to the extent that you think is helpful and beneficial. And Commissioner Sturmfelds, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, kind of as the conversation's developed, I really think consideration of the, the drive-in use on West Capitol and Sacramento have both needs to, needs some more thought, for two reasons. One, my knowledge of the, the fast food industry in particular, those facilities are starting to be upgraded with more regularity, and franchises in particular are having greater expectations on new buildings built more quickly, and thinking about the age of some of our buildings, if, if they have an option to either shut down because their franchise agreement's not extended, or rebuild, we're essentially losing a, a food option on, on an area of town that I think is already severely limited in food options. And while it may not be my preferred choice of food option, or some of my colleagues, I, I think we need to be really thoughtful about the unintended consequences of putting, particularly food options at a non-conforming use in an area of town that really, if anything, needs more food options, and healthy food options.
Healthy food options, exactly.
And then I'll add one more piece, related to what Commissioner Moore was saying. They're certainly notifying business owners, but it wouldn't hurt, actually, at this stage in the game, to, to work with the chamber, because it's one thing to receive a document just saying, oh, they're changing this, but if you reach out to the chamber, which are generally the more active businesses, and say, this is what we're doing, we welcome your feedback, you, you know, it may be that they say, oh, well, you know, if we just change these two to, you know, conditional uses, or, you know, with a little C, conditional use, that would be something that the business community could get comfortable with.
There's a great way to start it, you know, go into the chamber. But you, you know, and I'm, I'm not opposed to what you're saying, and maybe limiting the drive-throughs in this area is a great idea. It's just you have a few, and you have a number of businesses when you really look at them. We're not talking about one or two businesses, you're talking about 10, 15 businesses on West Capitol Avenue, alone, not talking Sacramento Avenue. And you never talked about the hotels that are falling down. I mean, if you've got guts and you want to put something out there, you know, let's talk about the bad hotels that are out there. So there's great hotels out there, but you've got some that are dilapidated, too. So, you know, that's why I'm saying, it's okay to deal with businesses, but you need to do it, and the chamber's another good opportunity, because they have that whole committee that they'd love to have you come in and make this presentation.
Right, right. Well, yeah, I do agree with Commissioner Moore's point, you know, if we're going to be courageous about modifying our land uses out there, you know?
Don't be that.
Throw it all out there. No, and it's good. I think, you know, I've been walking a lot these days and hearing from a lot of our residents about what their interest is, and they've had it with fast food restaurants, just put something, put something out there that's, you know, just edible, and, you know, something they, they can do more, they want to do more here in our city. So something that is more attractive, and, you know, family-oriented, something that they can do to enjoy in our city, and grateful that we're moving in that direction. All right, anything else? No? Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Laffey, for the presentation. We'll now move to our informal discussion. Is there any, yes?
Just are there any commissioners that maybe start with our next meeting, October 20th, would not expect to be there at this time? I knew about Dr. Kelcher.
Oh.
And then.
Okay, October 20th, is everybody going to be here, aside from Dr. Kelcher? No?
And then our next meeting after that, which is arguably probably the most critical one, would be November 3rd, at this time. Are any commissioners expecting to not be available then? I know Mr., Mr. Sturmfelds is on a wait-and-see approach. Well, it sounds like we'll at least have, be not in danger of not having a quorum or anything like that, so, for our next two meetings. So those are going to, both going to be important.
Excuse me, Madam Chairman, we didn't take a vote on the last item.
There's no vote required on that one at the workshop.
Thank you.
So we voted yes. Could I ask a question, Martha?
You just did? Yes, go ahead.
David, I was, I've been asked a couple times now, there's some grading going out out by Lowe's.
Yes.
And they were curious if we were getting more storage units, or a nice restaurant that you got for us.
No, that is the Arco Gas Station.
Oh, it is the Arco.
Yeah, that, that came before, our parcel map came before the planning commission about a year ago, maybe. I forget exactly when, but that's the Arco.
That's fine, I didn't remember.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If anyone else also is curious about grading, they see stockpiling just north of the barn. That's for the River Edge Apartments project. That hopefully will go to construction sometime early next year. We'll be getting a lot of inquiries about it, so.
And just, there, there's a couple of things that I received from, from residents. There's a, a road that is, there's trucks going down that road. There's a road that is, there's trucks going down that road. I think it's, it's right off of Jefferson, and I do recall that we're going to be paving that road and making it safe. And part of the, and I'll give you the name of the street here on the side, but part of the problem that we've been seeing here is that there are a lot of potholes, really huge potholes in that road. And, you know, the residents are concerned when it rains that this is, you know, especially with bicyclists going down, there's not a whole lot of room for bicyclists to be driving down there, that they're concerned that there could be a serious accident. And also on the corner of Highland and Stone, there is, on, on the corner of the sidewalk, there is this little bar that's sticking up, and there have been some people falling over that, and I'll, you know, just-
Highland and Stone?
I think it's Highland and Stone, or Highland and Linden.
Highland and Lake Washington?
Or Highland and Lake Washington, it could be Highland, okay. I think that there, and I was, I was going to be receiving an email and get more information, but I haven't received that email, so.
Certainly.
I will pass that on to you.
Relay it to me and we'll get it directed to the proper parties.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll accept a, if there's a note-
Motion to adjourn to the 49er game?
Adjourned.